No order, please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thanks for coming, everybody. Everyone jumped their clock ahead. So when we leap forward with our clocks, that's when everyone's supposed to change the batteries on their smoke detectors. So I'm reminding everybody to do that. And if for some reason you can't call us or the fire department, and we will get somebody out there to change for you. If you're shaky on a ladder or anything, we'll come out and swap them out. So probably say that another time today, too. Roll call.
Mark Burchard.
Here.
Artie Bryson.
Here.
Crystal Rigan.
Glad to be here.
Cindy Valentine here, Joanne Shirkey.
Here.
Maureen Borey.
Here.
Kristi Hilton.
She's absent excuse. Okay, bill's payable. I will entertain a motion.
We'll make a motion that we support and approve the bill's payable in the amount of $191,389.20.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Crystal Rigan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Maureen Borey. Mark Burchard.
Yes.
All right, next is our supervisor's report. Sorry, it's a long one. Lots of stuff going on. As far as our high water report, you know, I'm very optimistically hopeful. Our water is actually down right now about 14 inches from where it was this time last year. And, you know, normally this time of year it starts going up, which it will. But actually, in the past week, week and a half, it's actually gone down a little bit. We've had a dry March so far. Let's not jinx our stuff. COVID-19, we're getting more and more vaccinations, being administered every day. And in fact, I actually logged in last week with the St. Clair County Health Department to get it. And I got an email today, and I'm scheduled for this Wednesday to get my first shot. So whatever, I didn't do anything special, didn't say anything special, and I was really surprised. So that being said, they're supposed to be rolling out a bunch more vaccine the next week or two. Been notified, actually, last, I can't remember, it was Thursday or Friday, they're all blurring in together, that with the COVID relief fund, or federal COVID relief bill, that Clay Township is actually getting estimated around $878,000 and some change. The county, St. Clair County, is getting about $31 million. I've been on the phone a lot Friday, today, actually Saturday. It's really scared me in the beginning. I'm not sure what kind of strings are attached to it yet. I've heard that this is money they want us to spend. I've heard the opposite. They, my big thing was too, Friday, I was hearing rumblings out of Lansing that they're gonna reduce our state...
Revenue sharing?
Yes, thank you, revenue sharing, which happened back when Graham home days. I heard a lot of stuff. I verified that this money, we don't have a time date yet, it's gonna be allocated through the state legislature, so they're gonna have to approve it. And it's probably gonna come to us in two different checks, like one sooner and one, I'm just guessing, four or six months from now. I don't know.
Artie, there is some guidance that SEMCOG sent out late this afternoon.
Yeah.
So they have 90 days to distribute it to us, 50%, and then 12 months to give us the other 50%.
Okay.
And it has to be spent by December 31st of 2024.
Okay, thank you. I didn't see that.
And there are restrictions to how it can be spent.
Right, I didn't see that just yet. I was talking to MTA, they said it's coming out soon.
Yep, it came out late this afternoon.
Okay. I was in a lot of talks with the county, because they got a big chunk. And they, kind of seeing how what they're thinking is and how they're gonna spend it going forward, I kind of think myself personally that, you know, we're gonna be paying for this for a long, long time to come in the future, in one way or another. So whatever this money gets spent on, it should be on either reducing our costs going forward, increasing our tax base, so we can get a good return on investment on this. I'm thinking, you know, like infrastructure, that type of thing. And the county was kind of in line for it, too, that thinking. They have, the county has a problem where someone big wants to come in and build a plant or something. They actually gave, Magna bought their last available good piece of property for a factory up in St. Clair. And, oh, I talked to someone in Economic Development, EDA up there, and they said, "We have asked right now for a plant for batteries, and they're looking for 150 acres." And right now, we don't have a build-ready piece of property for that in the whole county, where we can supply enough water, gas, and electricity. So that being said, they're looking at the 26 mile road corridor. And they have plenty of gas there, but not so much electricity requirements and water. So they're looking at possibly taking a good chunk of this stuff and improving the infrastructure there. And I kind of said, you know, told them that I myself personally would support that. I know it wouldn't be, you know, taxes for Clay Township property, proper, but boy, we'd benefit from jobs from that. And so they're looking at that, and they actually gave me some rough numbers to do the whole corridor, probably be $20 million. But they are definitely looking at spending money down the lower part of St. Clair County as opposed to way up by Port Huron and north. So I'm sure there'll be more talks on that going forward. I just want to let everybody know about what's happening on that level. Working on the grant funding for Blue Bill Bridge, and this is for 2024, if it gets approved. Estimated cost right now for that project is $720,000. And our estimate, if we get all the same federal, state, and local taxes or county grants that we've been lucky enough to get for the last two bridges, township share will be about $9,240, I estimated. So that's nice if we're successful doing that. The Flamingo Bridge replacement has started, and they're actually getting ready to put in the temporary bridge. I just learned that they might have to hold up because the frost laws are still on. But once they remove the existing bridge per the contract, they have 100 days to finish the new bridge and have that available for crossing. The total contract has to be done by the end of July. But they're looking at removing the existing bridge and switching over to the temporary bridge around April 1st, if not before. There is gonna be a traffic issue there under construction because they're gonna have red lights monitoring, because the temp bridge is a one-way bridge, and they don't have much room to stage cars that are going onto Flamingo from M29. There's only gonna be room for about two cars. So they're gonna basically say, "There's no left turns from M29, going from Elginak that way onto Flamingo." We're gonna have to do a turnaround and make a right-hand turn and maybe stage off the side of the shoulder, so just want to warn everybody of that. I had a pretty good conversation with the traffic designers, and they didn't see any way around that. So, and yes, our frost laws are still going on. We're starting work on the rehab of the bike path. The guy that's doing the sealing and rubberizing all the cracks and filling in the big holes has actually started. I don't know if he worked today or not. He was making the cuts where they have to, he's gonna have to pull out some asphalt and replace it. And he's getting ready to do his sealing and rubber filling. So we actually have that now on the agenda, so we'll be talking about that more. And that's actually for, you know, we have a $45,000 management grant to help pay for that. And I've been dealing with a lot of building and blade issues. And let's see, what else? Oh, we have scheduled our township cleanup for the weekend of June 5th. And again, that's June 5th on the mainland, that's Saturday. It's gonna be behind the water department. And on Harson's Island, we have it actually for two days, June 5th and 6th, on Brown's Field on Harson's Island. And also, it'll go through the budget process, but I'd like to actually have a second cleanup in the fall. This is pretty popular, maybe towards the beginning of October, end of September. And I actually asked the Carson Town St. Clair Flat Association if we could utilize Brown's Field. We're gonna look at some dates and get some possible dates on having a second one. Let's see, and that being said, I was gonna tell the department heads it's that time of year, we're gonna have to start talking budgets in the next couple of weeks. So start figuring out what we're gonna need for the next year. And we should sit down here in a couple of weeks and start hashing that out. We, no limits fishing charter with barrier-free plus on the Pearl Beach. Actually, probably gonna execute that contract tomorrow. Our attorney actually crafted a nice contract, and they agreed to it. And he's gonna come in tomorrow and we're gonna sign that. They were actually on WJR Saturday on the radio. The Inside Out guys, you know them, don't you, Chris? They were talking to barrier-free plus about everything, what they do. And they brought up the fishing boat charter, and they probably talked about it for 10 minutes. And they, "Oh yeah, it's in Clay Township, Pearl Beach Fishing Pier." It was very positive, and so that's a good thing. Met with the Harson's Island Homeowners Association last week, along with Maureen and Joanne, and Chief George Rose was there. I do have a wastewater treatment plant meeting this Friday. We're gonna be talking a lot about capacities, how this contract's been set in the past. Clay pays for 35% of all the capital improvements. Ira pays for 35% of the capital improvements, and Elginak's paying 30%. But as of late, actually, quite a few years, Elginak's capacity has been more than 30% because, mostly because of water filtration during the higher water. And so we're like, you know, timeout, we're paying for, you know, a greater share of the capital expenditures of this water plant. And, you know, we feel like we're paying more, paying for our share. With, you know, the past couple of years, they've been 50% of the capacity. So we're going to hopefully agree, come up with and agree with some kind of formula based on flow, maybe over the last five years or something, as far as capital improvements going forward with the plant. So, and SEMCO, we ran a new gas line to the concession stand in the park today. Right now, we have electric heat to heat it, and it's quite expensive. And we've kind of figured out, run the gas line, put it in the furnace, it would probably have a return of investment in less than a year. We'll be saving a lot of money. Electric heat is, I don't know, what were we paying, about $1,000 bucks a month?
For the perk?
Yeah.
And electric, yeah.
Yeah, it's been quite heavy. And it's, yeah, we got, we're gonna put some gas heat in there. It'll save us a couple, three grand a year. So that's all I have. Any questions or anything? Okay, moving forward. Public comments, any public comments? Come on up, your name and address.
My name is Carol Sampson. I live at 6039 Point Tremble Road. I was watching the IMTERRA presentation on YouTube, and the gentleman on the presentation was mentioning about having a meeting with Artie, stating that what he could do to help, what you said could help bring the cost down to have us on the, have them, have us get them again as garbage disposal. And you had mentioned a dollar would help. Well, the February 15th meeting, we already knew the priority waste was $10. So IMTERRA was $1,250, and when you mentioned a dollar, that would only bring it down to $1,150. So I don't understand why you would tell IMTERRA, instead of saying, "Put your quote in and we can come back."
That's how we said it, and that's not how it went down. I didn't say a dollar. They basically said the dollar figure. So what he said would actually...
When you go into 28 minutes of the meeting, he actually said that he had met with you.
Artie, this is public comments.
Right, I understand that.
And they can put the meeting, have it down. So I'm just wondering why that situation happened. And everything, I have a problem with the meeting minutes. Like, the February 15th, I had mentioned all the missing pages that were on the priority waste contract. And Mr. Bain had mentioned stuff before me, but it started out with Kelly Nader in there, and the meetings were very vague about that. The only thing that was in that meeting that I was saying that, I had trouble printing the agenda, the new agenda. Well, I got that taken care of. But to me, the meetings, that's very vague, because there's, the meeting was cut out to what I had said and what Mr. Bain had said. So the minute meetings were just very vague for that. But I noticed that the comments, board comments, were all put in there very well. So I just want to, I just wanted to mention that about the IMTERRA with their quote, that you already knew the price of the priority quote when you told them a dollar. So to me, it felt like you threw them under the bus. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Come on up.
Yeah, Harold Bain, 757 North Channel, representing Hyda. I got a comment that I contacted the township attorney, and she said that she could not discuss anything with me because she was directed by the board. Because I asked her if the board and Hyda were ever gonna meet, and she didn't have anything to say. So I requested an open comment previous meeting to address that before I talked to the attorney. And you said you'd call me.
Okay.
You never did.
Sorry.
Yeah, okay.
You can call me, Harold.
Yeah, you're right. I just have one question. Does the board know what Hyda operates under? What public act?
I don't have hand. You're asking me.
Would you like a copy?
Sure. Always.
This is what Hyda operates under. Public Act 196.
Yep.
So I just, could you expect a call for me tomorrow, Artie?
Sure, tomorrow afternoon would be better.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dan Vinay. I'm with Priority Waste. I don't live in the county, but I live in St. Clair Shores 22419 Milner. Just want to say thank you all for the opportunity to bid on the waste contract. January 4th was when it was released by Artie. We submitted a competitive bid, what we feel like was good for the township. With the numbers that were submitted, were annually about $170,000 lower than the other bid that was received originally, $86,000 lower than the adjusted bid that was submitted on February 15th with the IMTERRA special meeting. I do understand that, or in the meeting on the 15th, I expanded upon priority waste and who we are, what type of company we are. We pride ourselves on service. We pride ourselves on being better than the industry average. We want to be active and engaged in the communities that we live and work in and every day, and ultimately exceed our customers' expectations when we come out to your township and the other cities or villages that we service. I do understand today that there's a contract issue. I was made aware of that this afternoon, and just wanted to reiterate that we are 100% supportive of Clay Township. Whatever you need, we'll honor our prices. I would suggest that, knowing the situation a little bit, that you push them on the renewal of being maybe only one year because of the circumstances that arose very last minute. So thank you again, Dan from Priority Waste. Have a good night.
Thank you. Thanks, Dan, just coming up. Any other public comments? Going once, going twice? Okay, thank you. Moving right along, we have Fire Chief Report. Chief Rose.
Good evening. Chief's report for February 2021. During the month of February, I attended two meetings, St. Clair Flat Homeowners Association and also the St. Clair County Fire Chiefs Association. General business was discussed in both. During the month of February, the ferry shut down for a few days. So we activated our ferry shutdown plan, which includes Station 2 with staff, with fire department personnel, along with a paramedic from TriHospital. We notified US Coast Guard Air Station, also MetStarlight Flight, along with the Michigan State Police, were notified in case we needed an air vac. We also assisted the post office. We took the mail across a couple of times. And we also assisted San Souzy Market by taking some food across with the airboat. I received a call from West Shore Fire Company. They're the ones that we bought our fire trucks. Those should be completed by April, I have April 23rd, but I got a better date of April 26th. They should be done, and they'll be brought up from Florida up here around the first week of May. The airboat will be done at the end of the month, so we'll be going down and picking that up. I also submitted for two grants, for the AFG grants. One was for AEDs, so we standardize all our AEDs in the township with physiocontrol, so we're compatible with TriHospital. And that grant was for $34,154. I also did a regional grant with Ira Township, Marine City, Elginak, and ourselves for new portable radios. And that one was for $609,988.29.
That's for how many communities?
That was with Ira Township, Marine City, Elginak, and us. Four communities.
Hey, Chief, if you could expound, I brought it up at the island meeting. What was our staffing like on Harson's Island for the month of February and March so far?
We staffed it pretty much every day in March and every day in February.
Yep, 24 hours. That's a lot better than we've ever been, so I just wanted to bring that up. So, any other questions for Chief?
Who's gonna pick the fire trucks up?
Well, when they come back to the state up here, they'll be shipped to Grand Rapids, and they'll go through the truck, and they'll check the fluids and everything. And then we'll, either we'll pick them up or they'll deliver them to us. You wanna go?
Guess I can't throw my hat in the ring for a trip to Florida, huh?
Yeah, we're not going to Florida for that.
Chief, how are your new hires working out?
Pretty good.
Yeah?
Yeah.
You find that you have enough personnel to adequately staff what you need to staff right now?
Well, we always could use more people.
Okay, you still on the hunt?
Yep.
Good.
So, yeah.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Good stand. Thank you.
What's that?
I said, "Thank you."
All right, moving along, we have the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the minutes from February 15th, March 1st, the special board meeting of March 8th, check reports. There's a cemetery cleanup notice effective March 29th. The DPW will be cleaning up the cemetery. The grave blankets need to be removed. And a communication from the Council on Aging thanking us for our annual donation.
Support. Okay, motion of support. Any discussion or anything needs to be pulled out?
Would we try to look at what Sampson was talking about on the minutes and make any changes? Would we do that?
No.
Not no.
No.
Seems like if there's stuff missing, maybe we should add to it?
Do we have anything missing?
No.
Well, let's expand on that. This is a televised meeting, right? Whether it's Zoom or whether it's through board, it's televised.
Right.
So all of her comments, all of the public comments are made public.
Well, the problem is, for some reason during that meeting, I realized in the middle of public comments it wasn't being recorded. Why it was turned off, I don't know. It was turned on in the beginning. So I turned it back on soon as I realized that.
The meeting minutes are specifically to record the decisions of the board. That's the purpose of the meeting minutes.
So...
That's the purpose of the meeting minutes.
And videos and posts, that's not required by any municipality. We try to do it to be more transparent, more open, and more, you know, get information out. It's not a requirement, so.
I'm just unsure how detailed the minutes are supposed to be. If they're supposed to be extremely detailed or just general...
Yep, just for the decisions, so. Okay, anything else on the consent agenda?
That's it?
We got motion of support, all in favor of the consent agenda. Signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone oppose? Okay, motion carries. Okay, under new business, we have a garbage and recycling contract. I'll start out by saying, back in, I think I contacted six companies other than IMTERRA, back towards the end of the year, beginning of this year. Two waste carriers said they wouldn't quote us because we're in St. Clair County and it's a closed county. And we, problem is, they have to deliver their waste to the county-owned landfill, and they own their own landfill, and, you know, they, because of that, they wouldn't give us a quote. And I had two others say they couldn't quote, they couldn't accommodate us because of logistics reasons, trucks, that type of thing. And Priority Waste did give us a quote. And then actually, there was one company in Republic, they just contacted me about two weeks ago by phone. I said, "Sorry, man, you're late to the dance." So, and, you know, talking with IMTERRA, I mean, the... And, you know, talking with Emterra, I mean, the board knows, I mean, I'll fully admit it, I did make a mistake. How the contract spells out, you're supposed to, we're supposed to actually notify them twice. First, you got to say, "Hey, we got, we want to review the contract." And then after rejecting the review, then we have to give them notice of canceling the contract. Well, I canceled the contract, and this all has to happen before December first. I canceled the contract a long time before that. I was mad. They gave, you know, bad service. And I sent an email saying, "Hey, I'm canceling this contract, this current contract right now." I started asking for numbers from Emterra back in September, October, November. I didn't get any numbers from them until towards the end of January. And I did not like them, and told them, "No, you know, that, it's not gonna work for us." And as Dan from Emterra was here last week, or last time, he said, "Yeah, we met with Arti twice. The first meeting was very contentious, and that was a contentious meeting we had with them." So going forward from that, I mean hindsight, I should have, back before December first, saying, "Hey, we didn't receive any numbers from you. I'm canceling the contract and the whole renewal thing back then." But I know I was trying to work with them in good faith, and shame on me for that. So moving forward, they, our attorney basically told us this past week that if we don't renew with Emterra, we have a good chance of a breach of contract with this renewal clause. And she said it could be, it is defendable, but she does not like the odds, and we would be putting the township at risk going forward if we didn't renew with Emterra. But to that credit, I mean, this is the past month, Emterra did give us a substantial cost break on what they had get pre, or originally given us. And in fact, this past week, they actually knocked another quarter off the first, the first year. So it'll be eleven and a quarter per stop for the first year. So basically, where we're at right now is, if we renew with Emterra, we will be probably saving about, I don't know, seventy-five, seventy-eight thousand dollars a year from what we're currently paying this year. And they froze their rates for three years, so they won't go up at all. Which, I mean, if you told me six months ago, if our rates, our garbage hauling rates were gonna be ten percent less than what they are today, I would have laughed at you, because everyone's going up three, four, five percent, especially for recycling, so.
They still can go up for a fuel surcharge.
Yeah, well, that's with any, any hauler.
Well, I'm just saying, it's not frozen. If the price of gas goes to five dollars, they're gonna go up.
Exactly. And tipping charges are gonna go up also. This is just for the hauler. And, and they did put a service level agreement in, which we didn't have before, where, you know, we expect this service level agreement. And if they don't hold to it, we can tell them in writing, and they have to develop a plan to make it right. And if they don't, we can cancel the contract then, so. That's where we're at, so the board has a decision to make.
And this contract is through twenty-twenty-six?
Uh, no.
It's actually through twenty-twenty-four with a two-year optional continuation, provided they meet all the guidelines. But if the township chooses to cancel the service at that time, we have protocol written within the boundaries of the contract.
Which is the same protocol that we just didn't do correctly?
Yes. And another thing, too, our attorney wanted to make a couple of changes, which I shared with everybody, and that's been done today. Actually, our attorney actually crafted it and sent it to us and sent it to Emterra, and they also approved it, so, of the changes.
Yeah, yeah, so the changes were the arbitration clause.
Yep.
Right, the whole harmless.
Yep.
Agreement, and we wanted to make sure that the service level agreements were on par.
Right.
So they seem to have fulfilled their end of the adjustments, even though, you know, they seem to agree with the adjustments that our council has made.
Mm-hmm.
Priority Waste talked about a one-year contract, is that?
Well, you know, I did a lot of negotiating with Emterra. And I won't lie, I was kind, oh, and Dan from, that was here our last meeting from Emterra, he would be here, he's on quarantine, but he is available through a cell phone if someone wants me to call him. We did, you know, at first I tried a four-month contract, end-of-the-year contract. Emterra wasn't gonna have anything to do with that. I tried hard. I even tried to get a buyout for them, you know, "What's it gonna take for you guys to walk away?" And they weren't willing to do that. Their stance was, you know, "If we don't do anything, this whole contract just rolls over and goes into effect." So, like I said, we negotiated, and to their credit, they did drop our costs significantly.
So it's a three-year with the actual two?
Two. And the three-year, the costs are frozen. They're not going up.
Right.
For three years. And we all know costs are gonna be going up for everybody else. So like I say, they gave us a little over a ten percent reduction for this next year, and froze it for two more years.
Priority Waste is gonna be a little lower, but we don't know about their service. But the additional three years, if they do, if they give us good service, do we have to stick with them for five? Or after three years?
Can I help with that?
Do we cancel them?
What? Yeah. No. Right. We do not. At the end of three years, we have the option to opt out. There's protocol to follow, but we do have that option. Yep, there's, there's, the contract is written today that was modified by our council, Christine. The start date of this contract is April the first of twenty-twenty-one, and runs through March thirty-first of twenty-twenty-four. So then it has options for us for the following two years. It says it shall continue for an additional two years with reasonable economic increases unless written notification is given to the contractor by the township, not less than a hundred and twenty days prior to the above termination date that the township has elected to review the contract. And they actually put the costs in for the next two years already in the contract. They're less than two percent increase. See that, Chris?
I did.
Where their costs are.
Yep. Yep, I analyzed those costs, and it looks like the township will receive a reduction for the next couple of years. Provided we can do our due diligence and keep our tipping fees in order, we'll be saving.
So there's still binding arbitration in this paragraph?
Yeah, we, that was pulled out. And the one I put on your desk is redlined.
This is yours. What I'm saying is, the arbitration is still in this paragraph for the, for after the following two years.
Yes.
So should we make a mental note that if we decide to continue the contract after the three-year service period?
First, we'd have to approve the contract.
I agree.
Before we have to worry about it.
Right.
But somewhere in there, we need to note that that needs to come out if we choose to continue the service.
Right, because it wouldn't play an effect until, unless we did.
Unless we continue to serve, the action additional year four and/or five. Cindy, what paragraph is that in?
Six, maybe?
Yeah.
Yep. End of six, paragraph six.
Does the board have a pleasure?
I'm not a fan of the hoops they want us to jump through to terminate, which is what got us in this position to begin with.
Yep.
Not a fan of the three years. Not a fan they've been so difficult to work with.
Well, let's not overlook, we're looking at costs right now. Let's not overlook the service that was lacking as we went forward with the exploring other refuge companies. That's the main reason that we're here today, not because of costs, basically. So I think that something ought to be considered.
We have the service level agreement, right? Is that what you're saying?
Well, we have the service level agreement, but why we're here today is because of the lack of service.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Although we have an agreement for service level, it doesn't, to me, it doesn't really mean anything to them, nor for anybody, really.
Well, we didn't have that in writing in the other contracts. Right, remember? I called them out on that.
Well, I think those are my exact sentiments as well, Maureen. It really is. We're in a difficult position. We have an obligation to, A, provide, you know, a good company for a service for residents, but B, we have to control fixed costs where we can control them. And I'm concerned, personally concerned, that if we don't go through with this three-level, three-year agreement, then there could be repercussions that potentially could be unfavorable to Clay Township and the citizens. So I have some concerns personally about that. I do find that, personally speaking, my service with Emterra is outstanding. My guys are on time. I can count on my clockwork. They do a great job for me. But I'm only one citizen, and we've got close to ten thousand here, right? The price break, I can appreciate. We could certainly use that to the township's benefit. And I'm, there's a, there's a little reservation about the unknown for me. So that's where I'm coming from.
Well, we've heard several figures on what it's gonna cost as far as litigation is concerned if we don't continue. So I don't know how true those numbers are. Do you? Do you know how true, how true those numbers can be?
Well, my worst fear would be, say, if we sign with Priority, now all of a sudden we have two garbage companies picking up our garbage. And, okay, yeah, it would've been a little cheaper if we went with Priority. And then again, you know, I think they would give good service, too. I'm pretty confident Emterra is going to give us better service. They came out with a pretty good plan, service plan for us. I actually have texts, "Hey, we need to stage another dumpster on the island for mistakes." You know, he's gonna hire a couple of people to run around in trucks to, if they do miss spots, he's gonna monitor social media. We all heard that. And we have it in writing, they're gonna give us a service level agreement. So that's in black and white now. We didn't have that before. So like I say, yeah, I made, I made a mistake, but we're gonna end up better than where we were a few months ago.
If I may make a comment.
Yep.
They have left my garbage on the side of the road on the main highway more than once.
Right.
And I better chase them down the road, go uptown and find them, say, "Why didn't you pick up my garbage?" So I'm very unhappy with that company, that's me personally.
Right.
But I know of other people on the island that are, too. But as was said, between a rock and a hard place, we have no choice. Let's move forward.
Yep.
Go with that, and as long as we've got all our ducks in the row, and keep hunting for somebody better.
Well, I think we know who's up on deck. We've got a guy that put in a lot of time for us.
Yeah.
And was extremely competitive.
Yes.
Not to say that we won't follow the steps and put it out again, but.
Someone wanna make a motion so we can actually discuss it?
Board, I'll make a motion to approve the waste collection contract for Clay Township between Clay Township and Emterra Environmental USA Corporation. Contract period being.
April first.
April first of twenty-twenty-one through March thirty-first of twenty-twenty-four.
Can you specify the latest revised contract by our council?
The contract that Christine sent back to Arti with amendments that Arti forwarded us, we should have been a receipt of it sometime this afternoon.
Yep.
Is everybody familiar with the contract I'm referring to?
It's got the redline changes.
I'll support with conditions.
Okay, what are your conditions, Mark?
You got them. You just said them. Conditions on the contract.
We support, Sheriff.
Okay, so we have motion and support.
Okay, do we have more, more discussion?
Yeah, I have a little more to discuss. So my personal feeling is that we need some type of a committee to review this contract long before the expiration date. Reach out to our constituents, find the effectiveness, the terms, and then make an educated decision and advise the rest of the board on which way we think we should go for the year four and year five.
I think we should do it within our budget process, two years from now. That would be a good, a good timing for.
I agree, I agree.
Wouldn't you?
I.
This is a big, this is a big thing for our township to get your arms around, and I think multiple sets of eyes on something could aid.
You know, and all truthful, too, six years ago when we went out to bid, we only had one company quoted, and that was Emterra. That was six years ago.
Well, and if we have other large contracts like this, maybe we should look at that. You know, and have two of us helping you, because it's a lot for you to do, Arti.
Oh, yeah.
You know, if you could get us more involved, that maybe.
No problem.
Don't let me get started on that. That's a good, good idea.
Yep.
I mean, that's.
I have no problem putting a committee.
Not just this contract, but we need to look at all of that going forward before.
Well, our next big contract, probably be this next year, is going to be probably a twenty-year contract for water, our water plant. I have definite ideas on that, what needs to be in there. I have definite ideas on that, what needs to be in there going forward to protect Clay's interests. Well, yeah, I want to start like two years before that's up, actually.
Good plan. Good plan.
Yep. Any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Cindy Valentine, no. Joanne Shirkey. Maureen Bory. Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Chris O'Regan.
Yes.
Okay, passes. Next we have on the agenda, discharge. Yeah.
You did a nice job, Horace.
He did, I apologize for them, too, so. Yep. Have, had a, we have a discussion for our fees penalties on late water billing payments. Did you know when COVID hit us a year ago, probably a year ago in this meeting, we suspended penalties for late water payments and fees? You, are you granular with this, Cindy? Because it was, Christie is the one that's really granular, and she's not here. Last time I kind of talked to her, it must have been a week, week and a half ago. And jump in, John, if you know, I think we had about 150 people that were in the rears. We contacted all of them to try to do a payment plan, and only half of them are keeping up on it. So, we wanted to have a, some sort of a discussion on how, does the board want to enact the turnoff policy, enact late fees? On some of the ones that aren't, aren't, aren't holding to the agreed-upon plan to catch up, that type of a thing. But without Christie here, you know, we can postpone this to our next meeting, too.
Well, I'd just like to say that, you know, the COVID relief plan, that comes forward to those, and basically everybody, from what I understand, that should be...
Right.
Part of their... Payment, you know, to get out of whatever hole they're in.
Right. I agree.
Are you referring to using some of those federal funds to catch up on some of your...
No, he's saying they're $1,400.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, those, yeah.
Use those funds to catch up on maybe some of your past dues.
Well, that's what it's designed for.
That's what they're for, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I would support what you're saying there, Mark, I get you.
So I guess we have option of, we can put the late fees on and not use turnoffs, or do turnoffs and late fees like we have, what do you think, John?
I wouldn't turn off anybody's water.
No. Do you have any thoughts on this, John?
Well, I think the late fees are something we may be able to look at, but absolutely the balance needs to be paid.
Right. And like I say, in talking with Christie and the gals in the office, everyone's been contacted, they set up payment plans, and I think the, it's been like a 50% are holding to the payment plans, and the other 50% just aren't, we're not seeing anything.
There's a lot of help out there for people who can do that.
There are, and it's not from the federal government, too, there's other entities, too, and we can put them in contact with them, and I'm sure we have.
That would be a great idea. Give them a list for assistance.
Yeah, we have that in the office for, you know, some people that have a problem paying their heat bill, or this or that. We have those resources available already that we do. But, like I say, I don't know, do we want to take action tonight, or wait for our next meeting for Christie, or?
Sounds like it's about 75 people, you're guessing?
Yeah, I'm guessing, I could be off, it could be 100, I, you know, I really, I don't get granular with that part of it.
But, I mean, maybe we start to call them, and say, from here, starting forward, because we like these, I wouldn't go back.
No, no, we can't go back. Maybe starting in April 1st going forward?
I think that's a little soon, only because I know there's another stimulus check going to come to help some of these people, and I think we should allow them an ample opportunity to get on another plan. Obviously, we want them to catch up rather than default.
You don't want to hit them before they spend it, though, either.
Yeah?
I'm glad you said it, I was thinking of it.
I said, hey, that's how it works. Well, we can call them, and we can kick in another day like May 1st or something, but call them now.
I'm sure they're getting their income tax back, too.
Right.
So, it should be...
I could support May 1st.
I think we should wait, like Christie, what her consent...
Yeah, like I say, I haven't had this...
Well, unfortunately, Christie's wanted this on the agenda for the last three months, to be honest.
Yeah.
It's unfortunate she couldn't be here tonight, but we finally got it on there. She's a little concerned.
Do you think her intentions about being on the agenda is because she wanted this reenacted?
Well, yeah, otherwise we wouldn't need it on the agenda, because we're already charging them.
Right.
We need the time to contact everybody to...
Let's do this. Let me propose this. Let's say we're going to start the late fees, May 1st. We're going to have two more meetings between now and then, and hopefully Christie could be there. We would have the option of changing it.
Modifying the...
Modifying it if we need to, once Christie's here. But at least if we do that, we can start calling, I can talk to Christie if she's on board with it. We can start calling these people up and say, hey, if you don't have us paid up to snuff, May 1st, we're going to start hitting you up with whatever the percentage is.
Don't we have another cycle of billing that's come and due this week or next week?
Every month, we send out bills every month, it just goes a third, a third, and a third of the customers.
You know, apart from COVID relief, COVID-19 and the late fees, do we have a percentage of what it was before COVID-19 on what the late, what kind of late fees we were generating as compared to what we're doing it now?
Can you answer that now?
We're doing zero right now.
Let me tell you, it's higher, Mark.
Yeah, it's higher, we have more people in the rears now. I don't know if it's because they choose to be and just not paying it because of that, or, you know, if they have real serious employment issues, I'm sure it's a little bit of both. And like I say, we've always worked well, you know, what can you afford? I mean, we don't, we don't put a real, we, we'll make a plan that they agree to and to keep, and it's not like we have a big regimen, that, well, this is what it's going to be. We ask them, what can you afford, you know, what's the best way to get you on track, so...
And we have no way of knowing what generated their late fees? I mean...
Just lack of payment, we don't know what their personal condition is. Want me to make a motion, does someone want to make a motion, or?
You don't want to, do you?
I'll make it. I'll make it, I have no problem. You know what? I'm a firm believer that people need to pay their bills.
Yep.
And, and, you know, everyone has skin in the game with our whole water and sewer system that's hooked up to it. And I have no problem with that. And, you know, we do have, if not the cheapest, one of the cheapest water rates in the county.
If you're going May 1st with your motion, I'll support it.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we enact our late fees for our water and sewer payments starting May 1st.
Support.
And I wasn't quite done unless the treasurer, for some reason, would like to modify it, and we'll do that at our next meeting.
So then that really don't need to be in there?
Yeah. What's that?
Then that really doesn't need to be in there, because we'll do it at the next...
Yeah, we can modify it, okay. I, 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 I'll go with my original motion where we enact the late fees for our late water payments and sewer payments starting May 1st.
Support.
Okay, motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none, I don't think we need a roll call for this.
Might as well.
Okay, roll call.
Chris O'Regan.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Maureen Bory. Joanne Shirkey. Cindy Valentine, yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next we have, before us, fire departments requesting CPR mannequins for their training mannequins for CPR, $1,199.98 taken.
Anybody who's questioning, yes, that is how the fire mannequins are spelled. I've had two people tell me I had a typo, and it's not a typo.
Board, I'll make a motion that we approve the fire department request for the training mannequins in the amount of $1,199.98, arriving from line item 206-960.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and lots of support. Any discussion on that? Hey, chief, we got to get some, now that COVID's winding down, it was hard before, we got to get some CRP classes going. So... CPR classes. What did I say?
CRP.
CRP.
CPR. All right, any more discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, motion carries. Next, we have on our agenda for consideration, resolution 2021-04. This will be the third time we're doing this, and hopefully the last time we feel the need. Basically, we're saying that we have high water, and we have a lot of residents that are in risk of significant damage from wakes, flooding, that type of thing, and we are requesting that the Marine Sheriff Patrol strictly enforces the wake laws in our township.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2021-04, requesting Marine Patrol from the St. Clair County Sheriff Marine Division.
Support. Okay, we have motion and support, any discussion on that?
Is this the same as we had in last year?
Yes.
Exact same thing?
Change the dates. And I will say, too, that we, you know, we do have a new sheriff, and he is, they're going to deputize some of our officers so we can help on the water.
Really, is that true?
Yes.
That's good.
That's right. So I wanted to mention that.
We did see a little uptick in serviceability last year in the river, didn't we?
Yes, we did, so... And actually, we're looking, talking to Gary Eisen, there might be some, I don't know if it's just going to go to the counties or not, but there may be a chance of getting some grant money to help with that said enforcement, too. I don't know yet, I don't know how well it's funded or anything else, but that's one thing we'll be doing here in the next few, three weeks, so... Okay, we have motion and support, any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Joanne Shirkey. Maureen Bory. Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Chris O'Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next we have a couple culverts on Phelps Road, and everybody that's been on the board, and those who haven't for a while know that before we like to, before we pave a road, we like to replace the culverts that are unquestionable, or, you know, towards the, I would say, towards the end of their useful life, you know, instead of just waiting for them to fail, because nothing more I hate than paving a new road and then have to rip it up to put a culvert or two in. And it's always cheaper to do it right before paving, because then you don't have to pay for a paver to come in after the fact to do it. We do it right before the paving gets done, and we're, these two culverts are on Phelps Road, which is slated to be paved, and the board, you always know us, too, that these quotes are usually a lot lower than what they quote us for. So anyhow, we have two before us on Phelps for a total of $13,337.
Who does the inspection on the culverts?
County does.
The paving, the county, is that what you said?
County Road Commission.
And so it's their recommendation that these culverts are in such a condition that they should be replaced?
Yep. He says we might get five years, we might get three years, but we're going to put in a 25, 30-year road on it, on top of them. And like I say, usually when we do it, these prices would be half if we do it now, but if we wait and do it after we pave, you know, you got to cut it, you got to pull it out, you got to put it in the culvert, then you got to pay for an asphalt guy to make it mobilize for a special trip for, you know, to do a small section. And it's a lot more efficient and cheaper to do it this way.
I'll make a motion to approve the St. Clair County Road Commission culvert repairs on Phelps Road 2, to be exact, for $13,337 out of line number 101-446-971.
All right, we have motion and support, any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Maureen Bory. Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Chris O'Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey.
Okay, motion passes. Next thing we have is, I have one asphalt quote to put asphalt on top of the section that was built up earlier, and make it a nice, hard surface. We do have a second quote coming, it has not been here yet, or, do you know, any word, John?
Any day.
Any day?
Yeah, I remember.
Okay. So I'm asking the board to maybe, let us do, give me permission to spend up to this amount, and, or do not exceed this amount. This still puts us, we have had a $45,000 budget for this project. We, this, this plus what we've spent so far will put us at a little over $37,000, $37,696. So we're still, you know, seven, eight grand below budget, and I don't want to, I want to get this done sooner and later, because I'll tell you why, we, there's another round of grants coming available for bike paths, and they, we could take advantage of township-wide of bike kiosses, they are signage, and the little kiosses to offer bike repairs and information about biking in the area, and actually, a couple more benches around on the bike path. But we can't apply for that until we close this one out. So I'm getting ready to make another application here in about a month, so I'd like to get this thing closed out. So that's why I'm kind of pushing it a little bit. Oh, yeah, it's like, what is it, a square foot? Yeah, I figured out, it's like two bucks a square foot.
Who's the other bidder on this?
Jules.
Jules.
Did we attempt to contact at least three? Or we just contact those two?
I don't think you could get two that would take a job that small on Christmas. A lot of guys can't get their equipment in there.
Got you.
Those were the two that were able to bid it, yeah.
And we expect a bid from Jules?
I thought it would have been, I'll be honest with you, yeah.
Yeah, we thought we'd...
I'd be a lot more comfortable approving something once I saw both bids. Is two weeks going to make or break this whole deal?
No, but like I say, we want to get it done soon as we can and, I mean, if the board wants to wait, we can, but.
I'm just one person.
Right.
But I don't like awarding contracts without a competitive estimate.
Well, it, well, what I'm asking for is a motion not to exceed this. If the other bid comes in lower, we can, we can go with that.
Can you get, can, can they get any more specific with the, uh, work to be done? I'm understanding pathway approximately 65 by nine feet and the base will be compacted. What are they going to compact it with?
A roller?
Hmm?
Steamroller? He's an asphalt.
Well, 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 what, wait.
He's got, that's what I say, he's got the equipment. Yeah, but those don't do the job as well.
Yeah, this is, you know, under $2 a square foot for asphalt.
Steamroller or a 20 ton steamroller or? You know.
That's more the process, Artie.
I know.
That's something that scares me.
And what do you have to get the grant in for the?
Uh, I, I got about six weeks, but like I say, I, in fact, I emailed them, I was, well, if we have approved work, but it's not paid for, can I still close this grant out? And I did not get an answer. So, um, this is, you know, I got these grants from the Wilson Foundation, so.
And who's going to oversee this project?
We're not hiring an inspector for it.
Okay. Well, I got us, we got to get rolling on it because we're going to lose a grant, right?
Well.
You know, or.
I, and, and, you know, I'd like to get the job done sooner than later. I don't want to be, you know, in the middle of, uh, end of June doing this. It, it's, uh, this bike path is well-used.
This isn't going to be subject to, uh, frost laws, is it?
Uh, yeah, well.
Going in there?
Yeah, we got to wait for the plant, when's, when's the plants open up, John?
May 1st.
May 1st? So nothing's going to get done till May 1st, as far as the actual work being done. I mean, if you want to postpone it for two weeks, that's the board's pleasure.
I'd feel a whole lot more comfortable.
Just give me, uh, direction, make a motion.
All right, I'll make a motion that we table this.
Postpone, say postpone.
That we.
There's a difference.
Postpone this asphalt unlimited or the Bike Path asphalting project for two weeks. In which case we'll have an opportunity hopefully to look at two competitive estimates and make an educated choice. Support.
Motion and support, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone oppose? Okay, motion carries. All right, next we go into closed session. So, going to, uh, be entered into Colony Road in, uh, litigation.
I'll make a motion at 8:14 to enter closed session for Colony Road litigation.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support at 8:14, all.